All right, good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. As always, welcome to this meeting in order to have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, citizens' comments. Anyone have anything to say that's not currently on the agenda? Seeing none, move on to new business. Uh, treasure collector, staffing, would you want to come up?
Good evening. I'd like to take this time, thank the board. It's a great Monday night, opportunities to do other things. However, I think this is important. The beginning of the budget process, um, we know it was going to be difficult. We put together a budget, put a question out to people, and didn't get the results everyone was hoping for. However, many of the people on the board say much rather have a huge turnout and get exactly what the people are looking for. There was sort of a regroup and another look at things. Board is moving forward. And I ask anybody to drive past my house. I've had one of the first signs, and I've kept the sign up. I've got the team jersey on. Throughout the budget process, we had an employee leave, and there's a vacancy. I'm asking the board tonight to make sure that that position does not remain vacant for too long. Uh, at the very beginning of the process, there was someone in place, someone who had two years' worth of experience in that position. Things were, were running rather well. We had someone leave, that person leave with little or no notice, just ahead of the vote. Fully appreciate you don't want to put up a help-wanted sign in the middle of a contentious issue. However, we're at the point now where we're four weeks without that person. Um, clearly, they weren't pushed out the door in the last minute of their two-week notice. They had time to use. So it was a matter of finishing up whatever projects, and the rest being little note saying, hey, don't forget this stuff. There's, there's a couple of balls that we're juggling that are in the air. Through many conversations, we'd like to go through and make sure that there's a good understanding that this position is, it's a grade three. Meaning it's just not an hourly person who comes in and makes coffee and maybe answers a telephone. There's a lot of, uh, lot of responsibilities. I'd like to see that position advertised, um, obviously sooner rather than later. Uh, the job description is four pages long. Again, grade three, it's not a grade two, uh, it's not an entry level. While I'm going through my notes here, yes, we have some people helping out. Kind of limited as to what you can train someone to do for a short duration. So as much as I appreciate the time, um, the position was funded for the year coming up for the second, uh, coming up for this budget session, it is funded for fifty percent of the year. I think, uh, it should be made a priority to be maintained. This is the person who does the payroll, uh, the benefits. This is a person who previously, if I were away from my desk, your accountant would make a telephone call and say, hi, can you look at this for me? So it was, it's a big help to me as it was to the town, as it was to the Board of Selectmen's accountant. I've got pages and pages of information, and I'm not known for being brief. Um, appreciate everyone's time here. Um, this is the end of the year. This is how we make that last push. Now is when all the pink bills come out, the demands. We are looking to go through and get the last dollar in. Uh, the help of a seasoned person is truly missed. That's why we'd like to get it in place so that we could have someone working, not only to help close out the year, but to start the new year. Looking to, to advocate to get that, that job posting up and higher as soon as we could.
Any questions for Rich?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just have a couple of questions. Um, in the, in the meantime of getting this filled as we want to fill, all departments to the best we can, are there options that you can take at this time to make it work?
It's a stopgap. Uh, it's a piece of duct tape. There are a few things. The person who is there is very helpful. Answering phones, opening mail, there, there is an administrative portion of that. It's the other things that are closing out. So the, the answer is yes. Um, that means we've got two people instead of three, and if one of them is going on vacation, don't be outside of the five oh eight area code because payroll needs to get done on a Monday. Heaven forbid it's the Tuesday after Memorial Day, and someone's in North Carolina, and the other person can't get out of bed. So it, it's, it's limiting. Um, I think the treasure collector's office is unique in that there are daily tasks, weekly tasks, monthly tasks, and of course, um, uh, end of year. Um, one of the things that I had printed out, or excuse me, had copied. The town of Dudley is unique. It's unique in that there's a segment that wants to be able to tap their phone and pay something or to have it handled remotely. Um, I went to the bank watching out for banditos. Uh, there were substantial cash deposits several times per week since the beginning of the year. That means that's foot traffic. The people who are coming in now are paying all of the late real estate bills, water sewer bills. There's an excise bills that, that's catching up with them, and the demographic is not, I'd like to swipe my card. It's, it's all cash. Um, I've got the driest hands in the town hall because they've got so much stuff on it because that's, that's what's going on. There is a, a definite service. We're starting to get regulars on Thursday night. There are people who are there, um, because it was an option. Uh, not that we wouldn't progress and go to other things. Um, we're, we'll, yes, go ahead.
How's the bench strength in the rest of the team? What, has anyone, did anyone in, from the group do any cross-training with the person that left? Is there any?
Oh, yes, yes. Um, it's, it's a matter of, we're, the office ran well with three full-time people and sort of a part-time person of ten or fifteen hours. That was the person that took care of the counter, the telephone, while everything else was going on. It's not needed for, you know, for all fifty-two weeks out of the year. Fingers crossed, I'm gonna have a week in July where, you know, I'll, I'll be the May tag repairman. We will be lonely. Um, we had the one person leave and the, the other assistant step up and do the payroll. It wasn't, it finished at two in the morning. Uh, it's a matter of doing things and doing things well. Nobody wants to have a payroll, oh man, we made a mistake. There, there's a few sensitive things, and they're time-consuming. Um, though there is cross-training, I smile. You know, if, if I were to come down with a fever tonight, the office will open up, and ninety-five percent of what needs to get done will be done. We may come across something. After twenty years, sometimes I get the telephone call, hi, what do we do when we do this? It's institutional knowledge.
These are pretty good standard operating procedures, SOPs, procedures to.
Mr. Chairman, just, just a quick one. Um, with options, have you been supplied with options to assist the treasure collector's office until we are on solid ground, and have you accepted all of those?
One offer came through today, um, and haven't had a full chance to, to exercise that. The, the first person who had helped is now working beyond forty hours. So I'm thinking for every ten hours worked, we're paying for fifteen. I think the difference between the two, maybe the position that's vacant, um, we could do more with that.
Okay, so the person in the, the person that you have now can do ninety-five percent of what needs to be done in the office. That's good. That's good. So they're not one-dimensional. My, my question is this, and this is what I think is the black cloud hanging over or the big old gorilla in the corner of the room. We're at May fifteenth. The override vote's June twelfth. What if it doesn't pass?
I, I guess I don't, I, I haven't been, been, pardon me. I believe this is one of those positions that needs to be included, win, lose, or draw. This is, this is the Rosalie position. I was afforded the, the greatest luxury. We had someone who knew the human resource function, the payroll function, AP, everything like that, strong enough to show me and for, so somebody could take time off. And the person who came into the position got that position because they knew. We didn't have a, we didn't have a blank slate. We had a place to work, um, and to build off of. So someone is up to full song in thirty, sixty, ninety days as opposed to, um, I didn't want to get into, we've advertised the job over the Fourth of July weekend, and then all of a sudden we're into the end of July and, um.
Well, to build on Carrie's question, so the person that can handle ninety-five percent of.
It's technical knowledge, yes.
Right. And then you also, we have an intern that was offered, Olivia's back, and she's also able to help in your office? So you'll have two helpers, so to speak, for a period of time during each week?
Correct. And from the top, I appreciate, I, I had someone leave with short notice, and I'm receiving reinforcements. Maybe that's not the right word, but there is staffing. It is better staffing. You, you didn't take someone who, who needed a job, someone who is very much employable, um, brings a lot of skill set. So yes, that's excellent. My thought being that if we're going to be paying twenty or twenty-five hours' worth of time, maybe the difference between the two would be better spent with an employee that's just starting. That, that, that's my, that's my argument on this. Not necessarily argument, but that's, that's, that's what I'm putting forth.
Yeah, yeah, I get that, thank you, Mr. Chairman. But, you know, um, it just, the fact that other groups are shifting towards your office shows it is a priority in my book.
Agreed, and it's, and it's appreciated. I will begin with it, and I will end with that, absolutely.
It is important. It's like you, your, your group does in, in, interact with the, with the public quite a bit, so we need to have people there. But we have the financial realities of what's gonna happen. It's not only failed override, but if it fails, and then we have this proposed super meeting that's gonna end up happening, which I'm sure we'll talk about after, and, um, then what? So I would rather, like, not get, bring someone in to great fanfare, and then we lose them right away. Do you know what I mean?
I, I, I guess that's the second half of the argument, the idea that this needs to be made a priority. We need to.
We think, I think, Mr. Chairman, may I? I think a lot of the, the stuff, the, the sentiment out there is that the town hasn't cut enough. Right? Even though we cut two hundred thousand dollars from the last time, but it's, it's a common thread that is, is out there that, you know, like a regular business, even though the town, we run it like a business, it is, we're not actually a real business for profit. We're in the service industry, where we provide a service, and, you know, we have to make sure that we're providing said service. Right? So and what, one of the things they've asked is, uh, you know, is, you know, like the, you shouldn't add if you're asking for money, so we're doing with what we have right now. And that, that's kind of the way I'm looking at this. You know what I mean?
I, I, I understand your, your point of view, but this is a payroll position. This is, this is, this is a cornerstone. We're, the cut has already been made in the office.
The optics, if we kept someone in your, now I'm, I'm going ahead, and, and I'm just, if the override passes, great. This is a moot issue. Done. Hire someone. But if it doesn't pass, it, the optics of keeping your office whole, and then we're, we're laying off public safety, that's just, and I understand payroll's important, but I, I, I mean, we could have every department head come in here and say that they're important, and we just don't have the resources to keep everyone. If the override fails.
Any, any last words, Rich, before I ask the board's pleasure?
Thank you.
What's the board's pleasure? Any motions?
Look in and see what we're supposed to do here. Okay, votes to take any action. I'm trying to work it in my head. Mr. Chairman, I move that we follow the model that we have right now until the outcome of the override slash, until our financial crisis is known and we can decide from there. So I, I say we stay the course with our part-time interns to get, to make sure that the treasure collector has staff to deal with the public.
Just as a qualification, do you mean to keep the current amount of full-time employees?
Yes. Yep, wait, it's right now, what, what we've, what we've, what we've been offering, what, what that, the group has been offering.
Second.
Second discussion?
I was just wrapping my head around the motion.
That's why I asked the.
Yeah, a little bit. I was trying to talk it through.
Yeah, current FTEs.
Yep.
So with some, uh, you know, with some assistance offered, obviously not the, the full-time.
Current meaning two FTEs, because current could be three.
Let me restate.
Yeah, that's why I want to be careful.
Let me restate. Um, I move that we postpone, uh, declaring a, a full-time replacement of this role in the treasure collector's office until we solve this financial problem.
Is it okay with a second?
Yes, okay. For discussion, Mr. Chairman, um, the office was run with three full-time, and there was a part-time, and effectively, I lose a person plus a part-timer on a motion from the board for the staffing. I, I'm, I'm not following the logic of this. If we were going to eliminate the position or the, that's, that's, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand the mechanics of it, please.
Maybe for discussion, because we don't want to get into, you know, twisting words.
Which they will be.
So, uh, we can take no action at this time instead of a motion. Which would, would say we're not posting today, and we can review it at a future date. Or do we want a motion saying we're not gonna post for this position, and we'll review it at a future date? We don't want to, you know, we don't want to get so twisted and.
So my, my suggestion would be that effective immediately, there'll be no hiring without express vote from the Board of Selectmen until the financial crisis has been resolved, or until a vote has been taken, a staffing plan has been developed and accepted by the board. Something along those lines.
When you say no hiring, you mean every department?
If, if I get hit by a bus. If I get hit by a bus tomorrow, you have to vote to replace me. If, if something. If something happens to, no matter who the employee is, it will require a vote of the Board of Selectmen until, up until a, a new staffing plan predicated on a past inviolable budget for FY twenty-four has been developed and approved.
Basically, a hiring moratorium.
Correct. Includes all departments. That way, it's not just applied to the treasurer collector's office, but it's applied across the board.
There it is, across the board.
Yeah, that, that makes a lot more sense, because it's not about this per se, but this is, this was brought to us.
It's about the next four weeks and uncertainty after that.
You hire someone, you have to say goodbye to them, sunk in cost of training, unemployment, whatever else, false hope. So.
Is that good with the motion in second, or you want to?
You need to change.
Yeah, I need to restate that to reflect that, the hiring moratorium until if I fit. There are, any, any hire will require a vote of this board until we solve this fiscal process.
Until further notice.
Until further notice.
The FY twenty-four budget has been passed, the moratorium has been lifted.
You could, Mr.
This week's way.
Mr. Chairman.
So to be clear, it's, it's a hiring moratorium.
Yep.
Until further notice, any hiring going forward, use a vote of this board.
So my motion.
All right, so the motion or a second discussion again?
Again, thank you for the time. Could you put a sunset date of the reelection, the election, the question? And you wouldn't need to do anything.
We'll know.
We will know, because if it fails, then their school's gonna schedule their super meeting, and that's rough.
We'd be glad to put it on the agenda again.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure there'll be other positions we'll have to look at in the future too, if, if it goes a certain way. Goes the other way, you know, it's, it's, the meetings will be about planning the future. It'll be good. All right, so we had a motion and a second, and you have that discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Four zero. Thanks, Rich.
Appreciate your time. Again, it's lovely Monday night. Difficult subject. Appreciate everyone's time.
Hook me a few tries, guys. Sorry about that. I was just trying to make sure we did that to be across the board.
Yeah, to the treasurer collector's point, you know, it's, you gotta get the wording correct, otherwise it's, it's unclear direction to the.
Right, fair enough.
All right, public meeting. Layout of Partridge Hill Road, board votes to accept the layout of Partridge Hill Road based on documents presented and recommendation of highway superintendent and town planner or take any action relative thereto. I want to do this.
Mr. Chairman, in the, in your drive is the notice to the, the public meeting to a butters. Is also the actual graphic layout of the street. I think we have the demarcation in there as well. Yeah. So that's what we're voting on tonight. That's, we had to delay that last time because we didn't have our ducks in a row with the paperwork, so. I assume the highway superintendent has not changed his position, that it should be accepted as, and voted to be, as the way it's been laid out?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, all, all of the work's been completed. All the work that was required was completed last construction season. All the requirements that are in need of being met have, those have all been done. You have the plans in front of you, the recording, so it's, yeah.
We have to open up, is it a hearing?
No.
It's the public meeting.
Yeah, that got me last time.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that's right.
I'm ready to look at the clock. It's seven oh four. So what do we need to do next? It's the board's pleasure. Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote to accept the layout of Partridge Hill Road based on documents presented and the recommendation of the highway superintendent and the town planner, or take any other action relative thereto.
Second.
Any discussion?
If the, if Mr. Marcy in a second, or when Mr. whoever second, sorry, if Mr. Siggenavich would agree, I'd also ask that Mr. Marcy would just specify, accept the layout of a portion of Partridge Hill Road Dudley Mass, Partridge Hill Betterment Program, Betterment Order recorded in the Worcester District Registry of Deeds on November seventh, twenty twenty-two, in book six eight four five five, page two seventy-three. Just to be on the same side.
Good idea. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to restate my motion.
Mm-hmm.
I move that we accept the layout of a portion of Partridge Hill Road Dudley Mass, Partridge Hill Betterment Program, Betterment Order recorded in the Worcester District Registry of Deeds on November seventh, twenty twenty-two, in book six eight four five five, page two seventy-three. Right?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay with the second, or?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
And this is, Mr. Chairman, I want to, I would like a success story for the Betterment Program. The residents got together and decided to, you know, make their road whole and, and accept it by the town, so. Good job by the residents.
And it looks good.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Four zero. Any old business?
Walk that way.
Okay. Town administrators' report?
I think Michelle wants me to first ask the board to amend the minutes of April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, due to a scrupulous error.
Some vote?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, recall that Michelle spearheaded the effort in successful securing funding through the Janet Mauser grant to replace our town hall sign. We put the question of the design to our voters, the sign that was, I believe that Jeff and his crew completed the installation today, and that's a result of Michelle and Jeff's combined efforts, and we thank the Janet Mauser Trust for providing the funding for that. This new sign made of granite was funded entirely by Janet Mauser grant, including the cement to set it, set the posts, the electric for the lights, right down to the mulching plantings that will be around it, not one penny of taxpayer money was spent on design, manufacture, transport, or finish of the new sign. I'd like to thank Michelle for working so hard on securing the funding, and thank the residents that participated in voting on the final design, and Jeff and his team today for, over the last couple of days, for doing a first top, a top-quality job on the installation. She hates to be recognized. Is that's what's going on?
Fantastic.
Fantastic.
Nice job, Michelle. Thank you.
Nice job.
May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three is our town meeting. There'll be a Board of Selectmen meeting at six thirty as usual, and it will be in the Shepherd Hill Auditorium at seven PM for the town meeting. Candidates' night has been scheduled for June sixth. Michelle has sent out invitations to those candidates that are on the ballot, and we're working with the moderator, who's gonna moderate the evening, and there'll be more information posted on that through our public information team soon. And then we had some nice, happy things, so I'm gonna bring down the room a little bit and talk a little bit about the staffing reductions that the town has had since twenty nineteen. Mr. Chairman, since twenty nineteen, the following positions have been eliminated, eliminated or not filled. Building Department clerk, highway truck driver, part-time ZBA clerk, part-time Board of Health clerk, part-time conservation planning board personnel clerk, part-time treasurer collector, which Rich brought up tonight. That position that Rich brought up was, was funded traditionally right up until twenty nineteen, and then the funding was backed off in anticipation of what's going on right now, and that position hasn't been filled since prior to my becoming town administrator. Building and grounds laborer has been eliminated. Building and grounds supervisor has been eliminated. Assistant treasurer recently vacated, has not been filled. Assistant town accountant, vacated this year, has not been filled. Of those ten positions, eight of those positions were benefit-eligible, meaning that the, that the law required the town to offer health insurance, prorated, time off, et cetera. To date, the town has taken five of those positions and made them into two. That is code enforcement, licensing, and inspection assistant, and highway conservation and planning, which is a land use assistant. The land use assistant is actually helping enrich his office. That began last week. The additional duty of assistant town accountant has been temporarily added to the duties of the code enforcement, licensing, and inspection assistant, and personnel assistant, HR assistant, has also been added into the duties of highway conservation and planning assistant. An employee, like I mentioned, is also supporting the treasurer's office on a short-term basis. So that's a total of eight departments, zoning, planning, conservation, assistant town accountant, treasurer collector, board of health, code enforcement, highway, and personnel, covered by two positions. I also mentioned that the building and grounds laborer position has not been replaced, and last year, we hired seasonal and temporary help to assist with the snowblowing and shoveling and cemetery and parks maintenance, the brush cutting, the lawn mowing, and so forth. This year, I did not hire any seasonal help. One person with the occasional help of highway staff takes care of all of our cemeteries and parks, including burials and the town hall maintenance, and also the beach, which I forgot to mention. I mentioned one guy takes care of all the building and grounds. That one position was previously the building and grounds supervisor. That's been downgraded to coordinator and placed in the highway department. And all the previously budgeted expenses under the building and grounds department, such as fuel, equipment, et cetera, were eliminated, and the burden of those budgeted costs, previously budgeted costs, was absorbed, not added to, but absorbed into the highway budget. That means we didn't put any additional money into the highway. They just have to eat those costs, basically, in order to pay for fuel for the lawn mowers, uniforms, rakes, whatever it takes to get the job done. In addition, and as we mentioned quite often, Mr. Chairman, our own Michelle, our administrative secretary, is also the cemetery clerk, the parking clerk, the FAA administrative secretary, the town administrators' administrative secretary, capital improvements administrative secretary, and the Board of Selectmen's administrative secretary. She's also the coordinator for town holiday events and serves on the recreation committee, and as I mentioned, I have her working on grants a little bit too now. We had a discussion this evening about providing the treasurer collector's office with additional support from the land use assistant, which she's doing, and again, all these efficiencies have occurred since twenty nineteen, all of them, twenty nineteen. Now, if the override fails, we will permanently eliminate our part-time animal control officer, our police department's administrative assistant, and our assessor clerk. Also, our highway foreman position will be eliminated. Additionally, in the highway, another highway truck driver laborer may be going to the water department. Depend, there's a posting up now, so we're gonna have to see how that pans out. We won't be filling that position until the override is decided, and may not be filling it at all, depending on the outcome of the next month or so. So that's three highway positions gone since twenty nineteen. That's ten positions, eight of which were benefit-eligible, converted into three positions in over the last two years. If the override passes, we are proposing to not fund two of the three positions in highway, and instead proposing to add two firefighter positions for the critical purpose, this is if the override passes, for the critical purpose of getting a truck and a medic out the door in the middle of the night to our residents' homes, which not only increases public safety by addressing our nineteen sixty-two model, which no longer can guarantee that on-call and volunteer members will be able to respond in timely fashion at night, but it also reduces the cost of overtime required to recall career firefighters and paramedics to staff fires and additional EMS calls. So there's been a lot of talk about adding positions where, where replacing highway guys with fire guys, essentially is what it boils down to. It's adding new positions and eliminating two previously staffed positions in order to do it. It's a net gain of zero.
Of a service, Mr. Chairman, right?
Additionally, we're not proposing to fund those two firefighter, paramedic positions through local taxes for the first two years. The fire chief isn't here tonight, but he's been very successful in the past, and is continuing to pursue grants that will pay salary and benefits for the first two years for those two firefighters. Not off the tax base, but entirely grant-funded. We don't know if we're gonna get the grants to be successful, but we have to plan accordingly, and that's why we backed off on the highway position, so we're gonna do that. And again, if the override passes, the three highway positions will be gone, the truck driver laborer transferred to the water department, assistant building and grounds laborer was laid off in twenty twenty and not replaced, and an additional truck driver laborer also transferred to the water department, potentially, could happen within the next week or so. Three positions remain unfilled, and two, and two are reappointed to the fire department for a net loss of one position. If the override passes, we will also replace the assistant town accountant with a part, with part-time hours. It's budgeted right now for full-time. We'd replace that assistant town accountant with part-time hours, and the assistant treasurer, as we discussed tonight, hopefully at full-time hours. So here's how it breaks down. The total weekly hours for all positions either laid off or not replaced since twenty nineteen is three hundred and thirty-six weekly hours. That's three hundred and thirty-six hours a week that we had in twenty nineteen that the town no longer has. We replaced all those part-time benefited positions lost in twenty nineteen and through COVID with one hundred and twenty hours. The adjusted net total of three thirty-six weekly hours cut and one hundred and twenty restored with the two combined positions, and having reduced the building and grounds supervisor, building and grounds coordinator under the highway is a total net reduction, total net reduction of two hundred and sixteen weekly payroll hours lost since twenty nineteen. Now, if the override fails, we will cut four additional positions by the end of this year, which equals one hundred and thirty-eight additional weekly hours cut. Added to the two hundred and sixteen hours adjusted and cut, the total weekly reduction in hours is three hundred and fifty-four a week. That's if the override fails. To put that in perspective, since twenty nineteen, and still accounting for the creation of two combined positions in the town hall and the elimination of a supervisor position and reassignment to the highway, the town has cut or not replaced a total of eleven thousand two hundred and seventy-five point two annual payroll hours across departments from its annual budget. If the override fails, the town will cut an additional one hundred and thirty-eight weekly payroll hours for a total of eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-nine total payroll hours cut since twenty nineteen from the town's annual budget. That's pretty substantial, Mr. Chairman. If the override passes, we will add one hundred and seventy-four weekly payroll hours back into the budget, restoring the assistant treasurer, two firefighters, social services in the police department, and the assistant town accountant, which is still a cut, this is if the override passes, of two thousand one hundred and ninety-two payroll hours annually. So even with the override passing, we're still down about a position and a quarter, a position and a half. But if the override passes, we'll, we will have ensured that going forward, health inspections and housing complaints through the board of health can be responded to at an acceptable level of service, ensure that we can continue to issue permits and complete inspections with an acceptable level of service. We ensure that we can have an acceptable level of staffing in our finance department, as we just heard from Rich tonight, and we mentioned the assistant town accountant, including the town treasurer, and some support finally for the town accountant's office on a part-time rather than a full-time basis. And ensure that we can respond in an efficient and timely manner when fire and paramedic services are required, particularly overnight, and ensure that we can continue to be eligible for grant funding for bridges, roads, and infrastructure, and can meet our regulatory compliance requirements. Not just including environmental health mandates, but also social service mandates that will be included as part of our law enforcement operation. We will have ensured that we can continue to offer the convenience of online twenty-four seven and adequately protect the town service network and website with cybersecurity funding. Our library will remain eligible for state funding. Our senior center will be properly funded, and materials and manpower will be sufficient for annual maintenance and repair through our streets and our facilities. And again, this is all if the override passes. We will still be two thousand one hundred and ninety-two point four hours lighter a year in payroll hours than we were in twenty nineteen. Mr. Chairman, when I hear a read that the town of Dudley needs to tighten its belt more and cut until it hurts, even if the override passes, and I'm frankly at a loss as to how to respond to that. We've presented all of the facts. These are incontrovertible. They're recorded. They're, it's, it's math at this point. What we're proposing will ensure all of those things going forward, and we will still be down two thousand hours if the override fails. The total is eighteen thousand four hundred and ninety-seven, seventy-four, six, twenty nineteen.
Posted and?
Everything will be posted.
And linked all over the place?
But it's already being challenged as well. But it's already being challenged as well, which we expect, but these are municipal records.
Yep. Post them.
We're proposing level services, Mr. Chairman, not proposing to ask voters to vote in favor of raising their own taxes to receive less in services than what they're receiving now. That's why we're asking for what we need, as opposed to cutting more so that it hurts. That's the end of my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for bearing with me with the number of facts coming out of that.
Yeah, that was a lot. That was a lot of words. I'm glad that's being posted. I can't imagine someone at home taking notes and following along, so I'm glad that's being posted. Thank you.
It's the board's pleasure. Or any questions for the Town Administrator first?
Motion to accept the Town Administrator's Report.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Department of Communication. Anthem for Highway.
All I really have is they've begun the work on the demolition on the bridge on Brandon Road, so they'll be progressing with that. Should be within about a month's time, substantial completion of the job. Also, as John already mentioned, we did the, we performed the installation of the new sign on front. It was grant-funded. All of the labor's been done by the Highway Department. And there'll be some plantings and mulch that takes place to finalize that, so that everything will be in place before the Memorial Day holiday. So that's pretty much it.
Awesome.
Jeff, we're in, the Town Administrator Debbie, will we be posting the update on the bridge in all the different locations? That tends to get asked, you know, randomly on some of these sites, and it gets answered by people who don't know the details, so.
Sure, I'll be in...
Yeah. That's a big milestone. I think we need to announce it.
Keep that updated. So unfortunately, at this point, it's the demolition. It's, you know, there are residents or people traveling by that are asking if there's, you know, a resolution to the replacement of the bridge. That's not happening at this time. We still need to seek funding for that. We've funded the demolition with, or will fund the demolition with Chapter 90 funds, which takes those funds that would otherwise be used for resurfacing projects. And that's pretty much where we stand right now. And again, I will be communicating directly with Debbie, and we're taking photographs as it progresses, and those will be forwarded over to her and posted online. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Jim?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant Jim Ince representing Dudley Police Department. I just have a couple of things for the board to update all of you and the townspeople. We're going to be deploying the two speed trailers this week in obviously our high-traffic areas. The speed trailers are from 2013 and 2017, so you will, although they're showing their age, you will see them out there. They're still functioning pretty well. And the prom drill is scheduled for this Thursday, May 18th, at approximately 8:45 in the morning. The Town of Chatham will assist with that, as well as our Fire Department. And Light Flight is supposed to make an appearance, weather permitting. So I'd like to thank Officer Megas for doing a great job in coordinating this with all the other departments and agencies, so hats off to Philly does a great job. That's all I have.
Questions?
Thank you, Jim.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you. No George, Tom, and no Fire Chief, right?
Not tonight, Mr. Chairman.
This is the extra nights we give target till on. All right. Board member comments. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say a couple of words on what the Town Administrator went over briefly, based on the field override in April. Looks like the message came back. The voters want more control over expenses. They want a reduced amount, and they really don't, they really don't want to prove spending where the bill would not be due until a further date down the road. So there were steps taken, like eliminating the Educational Stabilization Account, school operational override now down to 994,283. Municipal side now is 1,674,514 from 1.8 million. 2018 school override was only for the school, that last override in 2018, not for the municipality. So we're already behind trying to catch up now. So we separated the roof and capital requests out. Back in 2022, the town voted to approve the roof panel security upgrades. The bill is due in 2025, so it'll go back to the town, where they will vote on how to pay for what they already approved to do at that time, when the bill is in hand, as they say. We are retiring debt fiscal year '24. The debt will be replaced for one year through a capital outlay question on the June ballot. So when we replace debt, we adjust the amount coming off against the amount of the replacement. In this case, the adjusted amount will be nine cents on the tax rate for one year, then it'll be gone. Okay? So in June, voters will be asked to vote on two questions. One's an operational override for both the schools and the town for $2,668,797. This will add $1.84 to the tax rate versus the original override question at $3.50. So we will continue to have the lowest tax rate of our bordering towns. We will also continue to have the lowest overall budget. So that's question one. Two, feasibility study for the schools, which will add the nine cents I was just talking about into the budget. It will only be for fiscal year '24, then it goes away. So as an elected person, selectman, I know taxes are unpopular, but I could tell you firsthand, firsthand, it's not as unpopular, it's not getting help in a timely manner when you dial 911. Or not having sufficient staffing to support police operations and investigations. I needed 911 a couple of years ago, and from the time they were called to the time they were at my door, four minutes. That, for people who know the public safety, that went from my oxygen level being at 35% down to 17%, and another minute dead. So they arrived just in time, pumped me up, brought me back up, stabilized, and I went out to Boston. So without the full timers there, the paramedics, the firefighters, it's no story. I wouldn't be here right now. So everybody is needed, without question. So I urge all voters to support the June override question, which will allow all of us to maintain service levels with the lowest tax rate in the area. Let's not jeopardize one another's health or our loved ones at all. Thank you.
Mr. Signage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, if you've joined us late, or if you were here the whole time, I'll just reaffirm it. Tonight, the board voted for a hiring moratorium until further notice. That's big. That's every department. As you saw tonight, it's every department. That's an important position in that office. We didn't hire for it. So we are taking, we are taking steps, and we'll see what happens, but for now, we're certainly tightening the belts. Thank you.
Mr. Marson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo Mr. Landry. That was very eloquent and very powerful. So the way I would phrase this is, I've seen a lot of feedback about we didn't give people enough choice for our splitting up questions menu style. And I thought about this a little bit, and, you know, if we had done that, if you look at like splitting school and town operational, set aside the feasibility study for a minute, and then the, you know, combined override, there's only five scenarios that can come out of that, right? And most of them are unfavorable to the town in maintaining services, as Mr. Landry said. If we had split them and the school passes and the town doesn't, the town has to cut. If the school doesn't pass and the town does, the school comes, calls a super meeting, takes the money, town cuts. See where I'm going with this? It's why we need to stand together, the town and the school, to work together to make sure that everybody is pushing for the health and well-being of our town, our students, our seniors, our veterans. Everybody, you know, deserves to have the quality of life that, you know, we've laid out and done a lot with a little around here for the last, I can't tell you how many years. And I'm proud of how far that our departments have come and how quick that they get to people when they need it. A combined operational override, if it passes, we have our level services, as Mr. Ruda went through very nicely, and I want people to really pay attention to that when that gets posted. We're not adding, we're not slipping anything in. It's not, it's not, people not trusting what's being said, I think I read today, right? That's math, like he said. So if it passes, okay, we're a let school and the town a level service. If it fails, if the school and the town both fail, school will call a super meeting and come take it anyway. Do you see where I'm going with this? The town will lose no matter what, so we have to, it's not a we-they scenario. We all have to pull together and state the case over, I say it five to seven times, it's out there, it's going to be out there. This, we heard you. You know, the boys up at the board aren't sitting here just wanting to find new ways to tax you. This isn't, that's not what that's about. You know, it's, you know, you elected us to lead, and we're trying to do that, trying to offer solutions to very, very difficult problems. I know everybody has this, but when you have a, when we're a full-service town with a very, very fair tax rate, sometimes when you live that close to the edge, you end up in bad places sometimes, and we don't want to go there. We spent a lot of time over the last couple of years working on economic development projects, which are still working on monetizing. We're not there yet. You can't rely on money that's not there yet, weed money. I hear, I keep hearing it, oh, we should just plan lifesaving equipment and people on weed revenues that aren't happening. There's a glut out there, guys. Things aren't, people aren't buying it as fast as they projected, right? So these are real problems that we're faced with. These are unpopular things for some people, and some people are always going to be against it, but I just ask you to have an open mind, open heart, listen, and look at it, and figure out, I'll say it again, what kind of town do you want to have, right? I'm pretty proud of what we do and all the positive things that we try to do as a community for our schools. I'm proud of my schools here. They've done a lot for my kids, right? Our public safety, our quality of life, we need to support it. So I ask everybody to look at the facts, understand them, ask questions, come to a meeting if you have other solutions to talk through, because, you know, we're not just coming here every two weeks and figuring out things on the fly. That's not how this works.
Every four days.
Every four, a lot lately, right? So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Marson. I don't know what to say after that. You know, a lot of people in towns thoughts, and I see a lot of, you know, comments about, we already said no. So the idea of 33%, now it's somewhere between 15 and 18% for a year, and then I think it drops after the other thing would come off, right? So we're trying to give the townspeople the option to vote to stay up with inflation and provide the benefits of a town that works with safety and education. You want to be able to educate your kids, you want to be able to live in town and, you know, call and have fire and police show up at the door. Or maybe you don't. So that's why it's a democratic process, that's why there's elections, and, you know, not quite cut it in half and see if that's palatable, because it's not everyone's, you know, you can't have a thousand options. There's only can be a few that works for the town, as Mr. Marson said.
Yeah, just one more comment, some of the other things. I'd like to say that there's a lot of people who are into business on this board, and we've run it in a business-like manner, but Town Dudley isn't a business. A business is for a for-profit enterprise. We're not in the business of making a profit. We're a service provider. And, you know, we need to be able to provide the best service we can with what we can afford, but then this is, this is the crux behind the ask. We will always run this like a business, and, but the reality is, it costs money to provide services that people expect and come to expect. We're a full-service town. We have a full-time Fire Department, except for the overnights, which the call isn't working, like we talked about, it's not as well as it should. And, you know, we can, we can continue to run things the way we have.
I also think the, you know, this school committee came in and mentioned that this super meeting, if I understand that correctly, it would be a democratic process there as well with Charlton and Dudley residents. If I, unless I'd heard that incorrectly, that's what I heard, wasn't, it's not like the town, school committee just votes amongst themselves, and they call us, the super meeting is town residents, so.
For both towns.
For both towns, so, you know, Charlton's in a different place and Dudley's. That's all I have. A motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.